Good evening, parents and community members. I wanted to thank you all for joining us for our town hall. We're going to begin in about a minute or two. We'll wait on some more participants to come into the meeting. Please make sure that you remain on mute during our town hall. As well as we will be recording this session so that we can put this information on our YouTube channel. So I did want to let you all know that the session will be recorded. One more minute, Dr. C. Then we can turn the music off and we'll get started.
Yes, sir.
Alright Doc, I'm ready. Good evening and good afternoon. Good afternoon, good afternoon. I am so happy that you all have chosen to join us for our very first town hall meeting. First, let me let you all know, we may have some slight interruptions. I'm having to admit our guests. So if you notice me veering off, I'm just admitting our guests. But at any rate, we're so excited that you've decided to join us today for our very first town hall. Today, parents and community members, we're going to be talking about what the expectations will be and what the school year will look like for the 2020-21 school year. So again, for those that I did not get an opportunity to greet, I welcome you to our virtual town hall on today. We will begin to unpack the expectations for the upcoming school year. Again, make sure that you remain on mute. There is a chat box. So as questions come up, or if you think of a question, be sure to place it in the chat box. Myself or one of the admin members will address your answers, your questions at the end of this session today. And again, our community members and West Haven family, this session is being recorded so that we can place it on YouTube so that in the event that you miss something that I said, you can refer back to it in on our YouTube channel. And I will make sure to send a robocall text out that gives you that link so you can go to that directly. So we're going to go ahead and jump on in and begin. This is West Haven. Nothing is really going to change about West Haven, but there are going to be some exceptions. And so we're going to talk about the exceptions that will take place this upcoming school year. So in school, as I mentioned, students are going to experience a regular scheduled day. However, there will be some few exceptions. So one of the exceptions, parents, is going to be students will be required to remain in their classroom throughout the day. We know that this is not the norm, but this is our new normal. And we're doing this in an effort to ensure that your baby is safe and that we can properly socially and physically distance your baby throughout the day. So that's one of the exceptions, that students will remain in their classrooms throughout the day. So you may have a question around, well, Mr. Woodson, will they change classes? Our plan right now, parents, will involve the students remaining in that same classroom. And then they would stay with that specific cohort of students throughout the day. And instead of them changing rooms, the teachers will come to them in an effort to make sure that we're not exposing them to other students. And as you look at the picture, I have provided an example of what it may look like in a classroom. So the bottom left corner, that is one of our classrooms. That is a third grade classroom. And with the physical distancing of about six feet, that is what the typical classroom would look like here at West Haven. The next thing that I want to talk about, parents, is daily temperature checks. Daily temperature checks. The CDC guidelines advises us to ensure that we're doing daily temperature checks for all staff members as well as all of our students. So regardless of how our students come to school as far as transportation is concerned, we're going to take their temperature using a touch-free thermometer. Any student parent that has a temperature of 100.4 or higher, 100.4 or higher, we're going to then place those students in our isolation room. And from the isolation room, what will happen is we will immediately contact you and let you know that your child had a temperature of 100.4. And we're asking that as soon as you get that call and if you're able to make arrangements to make sure that you're able to come and get your child from the school. Now, in order for your student to return, it will require that your child have a doctor's note clearing your child to return to the school. One of our asks this year, we know we always have supplies and we always have requests as far as what our child will need. This year, all of our children, parents, will need masks. So when you're thinking about those items that you want to purchase, make sure that you purchase masks for your child. And all of our students, as well as our staff members, will be required to wear masks that cover your nose as well as your mouth. And yes, they will have to wear throughout the day. Now, I will say this, parents, as much as we possibly can, we're going to try to exercise some flexibility with the mask because we understand that there are going to be challenges with our babies trying to keep those masks on throughout the day. If we're able to distance our students at six feet, that should give us a little flexibility. But we're really asking that the majority of the day, the students remain with their mask on in an effort to ensure that we're not spreading anything. As I mentioned, as far as the physical distances is concerned, if you look at the top left corner is an image of Ms. Hudson, our fifth grade teacher. So this is kind of an example of what you can expect in the hallway. The only difference, parents, is those students would be separated by six feet. The custodial team has already began lining our walls. We will have signage up that shows specifically where students should stand. So the only difference in that image is those babies, those young ladies would be spread out six feet apart and they would all have their mask on. And if you notice even prior to, Ms. Hudson is keeping safe distance as well. The next thing that I really want us to talk about is, as you all know, the district does offer before and after care. And specifically for West Haven, we've received a grant for before and after school care. If we receive that grant this school year, parents, your child will be able to participate in before and after school care. And of course, as you know, it is first come, first served. So they haven't given us any guidance around when that window opens. But as soon as we get guidance around our before and after school program, we will make sure to share that information. And again, it's first come, first served. But we will make sure that you are aware that the program is available and open. Parents should remain prepared for school closures. And then the next portion kind of talks about students will have laptops. So what we're saying is, a lot of questions have come around with Mr. Woodson. What happens if we have a child that has COVID-19? What measures will you all take? It's going to depend on that student's contact with the other students as well as the populations of students. So for example, if it happens in one classroom and those students have gone or another teacher's coming to the classroom, it may require that that grade level is unable to come to school. If we have enough cases, we may be a situation where they are actually going to close school. But we're going to use the guidance that the district provides us. But I want to prepare you for, there may be a situation where in the beginning of school and throughout this first semester, if we return brick and mortar, that we may have school closures. And so the piece that's going to be very, very important is that when the district offers the laptops, you take advantage of the laptops. Because if we close, we will immediately transition into our virtual setting for those students who are in school. And quite naturally, the students that are using virtual will continue with the virtual platform. But again, parents, I want you to prepare yourself for the first semester, that there may be closures that may impact a portion of the school and/or the entire school. So here's an example, parents, of what that screening process will look like. As you notice, you see this young man is waiting outside of the school. The administrator there is taking the temperature. Looks like in his hand, he has some hand sanitizer. So again, all students and staff members will receive temperature checks and mask will be required for all this school year. All visitors will have to undergo temperature checks and they must wear masks in order to enter the building. Now, that comes with a caveat, parents. We know that you are accustomed, especially the first two weeks, and especially with our younger babies, you're accustomed to being able to come into the school and walk your baby to class. Unfortunately, parents, because of this pandemic, parents will not be allowed to come into the building and walk their students to the classroom. We're still awaiting guidance around what it would look like in the event that you have to check your child out. But what I do know is, if you're checking your child out and you have to come into the building, your temperature must be checked and you will have to answer the questions for the health screening. And then you must have a mask yourself. And then you would have to wait for your child to be escorted to the office and then you will be able to leave. But our new normal, unfortunately, will not involve parents being able to come into the building and/or walking students throughout the building at any point during the first semester. The next bullet just kind of speaks to parents and guests will not be able to eat in the cafeteria this year. Of course, we know many of our parents, we love to take advantage of the opportunity of eating with your babies. But because of COVID-19, as I mentioned, you will not be able to do so during this first semester. We know that we always have parent conferences and typically that's done face-to-face. So you will still be able to have a parent conference, but all of our parent conferences will be done virtually and/or over the phone. So you'll still be able to raise your concerns regarding your West Haven students. We just won't do it face-to-face. And we'll make sure that we communicate all of that to you because we would have to have a really good schedule to ensure that we're able to service and address all of the concerns that you may have. So thinking about the in-school option, I want you to really think about this. First of all, parents, as you know, the district has extended the deadline for you making a choice. The deadline has been extended to this Friday, July the 24th. And you have the option of in-school or you have the option of virtual. So as you begin to make your decision, parents, there's a group of individuals in your home and some of your loved ones that I really want you to consider. If you choose in-school, I want you to be very mindful of your family members that are highly susceptible or have low immune deficiencies. Because even with the physical distancing, even with the students traveling in cohorts, your child is going to be around other kids. They're going to be around other students. And so as you begin to make your decision, if you live with a loved one who has an immune deficiency, you have to take that into consideration if you want to choose the in-school option. I just wanted to give that as a caveat so that you know you're able to make an informed decision if you do choose in-school. The image on the bottom right is an image of one of our West Haven babies doing our kindergarten promotion. And you noticed that she has her mask on. So again, we will be wearing our mask throughout the day. So in the event, parent, you choose the virtual option, there have been questions, who will my child receive instruction from? Your child will receive instruction from their actual teachers here at West Haven. And the instruction will be virtual. And so we're saying virtual, parents, because it is going to be very, very important, parents, that if you do select virtual, that your child is online on time for the sessions. They won't be recorded. They have to be in the virtual space on time. The time for our virtual online school will be very similar to the in-school. It'll be from 8:15 to 3:15. Your child will have a specific schedule that they must keep. Teachers will take attendance during the virtual session. So if your child had math that morning, your child is expected to be logged on for his reading in the afternoon. They have to be present for all of their sessions. For our pre-K students, in the event that we have any of those parents on the call, for our pre-K students, they're requiring, I believe, it's 3.5 hours of instruction. And for our kindergarten through fifth grade students, that's going to be 6.5 hours of instruction. And don't worry, parents, in the schedule, we are going to have time built in for your child to actually get breaks, to take a lunch, to have a lunch break, as well as engage in their support classes. So they won't be sitting in front of the screen the entire time with just our normal academic instruction. And again, students will have an opportunity in their virtual sessions to actually interact with not only their teachers, but also their classmates. So if your baby's in third grade and they're in the virtual session, like these two young ladies right here, they will be able to log on, see their teacher, as well as engage with their classmates in that session. Lunch options. Many parents have asked about, if I do virtual, do I still have the option or opportunity for my child to receive lunch from West Haven? The answer is yes. What the nutrition services is trying to do in an effort to ensure that you don't have to come to the school daily to pick your child's lunch up, when they create those packets, they're going to try to create them so it has anywhere from two to three days of meals. And what we would do, we'll set a schedule and a time so that you're able to come to the school, hopefully once or twice a week instead of every day, and pick your baby's, not only lunch, but also breakfast will be included in that. So again, your baby will be able to, from the virtual standpoint, have a lunch as well as have lunch provided by West Haven Elementary School. Any of our parents who have students that are receiving special ed services, whether it be instructional resource and/or they have an IEP or 504, all of those support services will still be provided support in the virtual setting. Even if you have a student that needs assistance with social, emotional learning, our guidance team will be available to assist those students and families as well. So in the virtual setting, you still will have access to the guidelines of the IEP as well. Parents are asking about, can my child still participate in clubs? And for now...
It's school.
Parents, just as a reminder, can you all make sure that you are muted? Yes, your child can participate in clubs. And of course, the way that we will facilitate that is from a virtual standpoint. If the district gives different guidance around that, we'll be sure to communicate that to you all. As I mentioned, parents, even in the virtual setting, there's still going to be expectations. So please make sure that your child is in attendance daily. Specifically, in the beginning, parents, our younger population of students, I K through two babies, they are going to require a lot of support. So if you choose the virtual setting, know that they're still going to have expectations. They still have to engage in the classrooms daily. They have to participate in the classrooms daily. They have to complete their assignments. And they may need some additional support. It won't be a situation where you can just sit the baby in front of the laptop and they don't get the support that they need. So if you choose a virtual option, just know that it is going to require, especially in the beginning, that you provide that additional layer of support to your students. And you may even have to provide support to your student in three, four, and five in the very beginning as we make this adjustment. But I did want to bring that to your attention to ensure that if you choose a virtual option, that you're able to provide that support to your child. One additional, we're, right now, we're, as an admin team and as a staff, we are putting together a technology team, a support team, that you will be able to call the school in the event that you're having some type of technical difficulty. So we'll make sure that we communicate that information to you so that if something is going on, whether it be something with the laptop or your connection, you can give us a call so we're made aware of what's going on and/or if you're having some difficulty with the laptop. But you won't have to call the district when you're having problems from a virtual standpoint regarding technology. If it's something that we can't solve, then of course, we'll seek guidance from the district. I wanted to touch on this as well regarding lunch. We are still making a decision around what lunch will look like. One of my plans involves doing 50% of the students that would typically be in the cafeteria with physical distancing. And the other plan, my plan B is, students would actually eat lunch in the classroom. I'm really leaning toward that option because I don't want to necessarily have that cohort of students around other students that they wouldn't typically come in contact with during a normal school day. I know in the past, our babies have brought their little cute lunch boxes. But because of the lunch boxes being brought from the homes, they're asking that all lunch that's brought into the school be put in a paper bag because we're going to discard those items. Because we don't want you to bring the lunchbox and then the lunchbox is in the school setting and then your baby takes that back into your home setting. So if you send your baby daily with their lunch, just make sure that you use a paper bag to send their lunches. So we won't allow those, our nice little lunch boxes that we typically have. Now, parents, at this time, what I would like to do is, as you all know, they've extended the options until July 24th for you to go into Power School and make your selection on whether you would like to take advantage of your baby doing in-school, brick and mortar, and/or doing virtual. So what I'm getting ready to do is actually walk you through that just in case you're having some difficulty. I'm just going to log on to the normal SCS webpage. And then I'm going to walk you through what the steps are in order to pick the option for your child. So bear with me as I come out of share screen. Okay, parents, so I have, Dr. C, give me a thumbs up if you can see my screen. I came out of share. Or anyone could just tell me. Okay, good. So, parents, I am on SCS's website. And you have a couple of options if you want to go and pick your option. This toolbar right here, it pops up immediately right there. So you can click right there. And once you click right there, I would suggest if you have not already chosen your option, that you go through this document right here. Because they're going to break down what's going to happen in in-school. They're breaking down what's going to happen virtually. And then they also have videos that you can watch in order to get assistance with logging into Power School. There's also a document right here that are frequently asked questions by parents. As you begin to make an informed decision, I would advise that you read all of the information on this page. Now, for making your option, you can't use the Power School app. So you won't be able to use the app if you haven't downloaded on your phone to access this information. You have to actually go to the webpage and go through Power School this way. So once I've chosen my option, or once I've selected, I want to make my choice, when I click this, it is going to automatically, parents, take me to the Power School login. And from here, the only thing that you would have to do is use the username that you had previously when you normally log in, and then the password. And if you're like me, I forget my password a lot. So the only thing you have to do is click, forgot my password. And sometimes I forget my username. You can use forget username. And then they will send you an email to the email that you have on record. And then they will get you started. And so once you go into their parents and put your username and password in, the next step is just for you to sign in. Well, you all that know, you know, my boys both go to West Haven. So my screen looks a little different. But over here, it has his login information, his name, and the learning options are over here. Now, you won't be able to go right in and pick your learning options. The first thing that you would have to do is actually register your child and update your information. Once you've done that, then it'll give you the option, parents, and you can just click over here and click your learning option. I'm going to come out of there. So again, we're back. Just to repeat, you go to www.sck12.org. And then it will take you, you'll click on learning options. Or you can click the banner, return stronger. Now, district code, they're saying if you try to access this over your phone, they may ask for the district's code. Again, you can't use the app, but you can use your cell phone and go to the website. In the event that they ask you for the district code, this is the district code, GWHX. If they don't ask you, you're fine. And again, once you, once your choice is made, parents, you won't be able to change your... you won't be able to uh change your mind. You'll be locked in to, uh, you'll be able to change your mind, but you will be locked in to that option for the first semester. So, uh, if you've made one choice now and you change your mind before the deadline of the twenty-fourth, yeah, you can go in and make that adjustment. But after the twenty-fourth, whatever your last selection is, that is what you will be locked into, parents, uh, for the entire first semester of the school year. And again, if you miss anything that I'm stating, I, I am recording this session and this will be added to our YouTube uh page. So you will be able to watch this as your leisure and pause it and go back to any information that you may have missed.
Okay, Mr. Woodson, we have a couple of questions in the chat box. Would you like us to read them out loud?
Uh, not, not just yet.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. So if you need support uh with Power School, here is the number, uh, four-one-six-five-three-hundred. Uh, that call center, they're available from seven to seven uh through the twenty-fourth. Uh, quite naturally, you can call the school and we will address uh any questions that you may have. But if you have a question specific to Power School, you may wanna give them a call. Uh, with Power School, again, the only thing you need is your username and uh your uh, your password. They may ask for your child's student number, and your student number is uh the number that they always have, and it should, it would be on their report cards. And if you don't have the number, uh, let us know and we'll uh be sure to get you that uh information. Many of our parents have had questions regarding special uh ed, if their child receives special ed services, and/or clue. Uh, they are available uh from seven to seven as well through July the twenty-fourth, uh, at four-one-six-five-two-zero-six. Uh, the sped department is going to address your concerns. But again, if you have questions, you can ask us. And if we're unable to answer them, we will make sure that we get uh those answers for you. We have to make sure that we're following the law when it comes to sped services. Uh, so again, if you have questions that are very specific, uh, then I would advise that you call four-one-six-five-two uh zero-six. Parents, we want to uh thank you uh for taking the time out of your schedule to come into our town hall. We really, really, really miss uh you all, as well as our West Haven students. Uh, and just notice, parents, whether you choose virtual or in-school, we're going to provide your child with the education that they deserve. So I don't want you to think that there's gonna be a difference. We're gonna provide high-quality instruction to your child regardless of the selection that you make. And we're gonna also make decisions that are gonna be in their best interest. So again, parents, I, I want to thank you all again for tuning in to our session today. I'm gonna come out of the share screen and then myself, as well as the admin team, we will address uh any questions that uh you may have posed.
All right. Good, good evening, everyone. Uh, Mr. Woodson, um, I'm just gonna start at the top. There was a comment um from Mr. Eric, "I think eating in the class would be great." Um, Ms. Brittany said, "If a child um has a doctor's appointment, how should we notify the school? And how should we send the doctor's note?"
Okay. Are you, I wonder if, um, Ms. Washington?
And I think, because the next question speaks on, since they can't bring the lunchboxes, can they bring their backpacks? So I guess that's why the parent probably was wondering, how do we provide, you know, the doctor's note? So I guess you can speak on the doctor's note as well as can they bring backpacks since they're not allowed to bring the lunchboxes?
Uh, that's a great question uh regarding the um, the backpacks. Um, and we haven't, honestly, we haven't even addressed that. We haven't really thought about uh students bringing their, uh, bringing their items. Now, one of the things that I didn't touch on is, we know the kids are gonna have to bring their things. So one of the things that we're gonna try to do in an effort to make sure that we're being as safe is, students won't be sharing supplies. And uh, at West Haven, we have cubbies. And so what we've typically done is students keep all of their belongings in their cubby. What students will do is they will keep, and it's, it, let me just go ahead and say, yes, students can bring their backpacks. But their backpacks are going to be with them throughout the day, and they would keep their backpack on the back of their desk, on the back of their seats, rather. So we will have kids going back and forth to the cubbies as well as we're gonna make sure that whatever supplies are being sent, that your child is the only one using those supplies. In the event that we have something that has to be shared, uh, we're going to use uh the CDC guidelines around cleaning those shared items and disinfecting them right after use, as well as at the end of the day. Now, in reference to if a child has a doctor's appointment, how should we notify the school?
Now, let me speak to that. She, she's saying she, she recommended for her children to be virtual. So she's saying that they won't be in the building. So only thing I could probably think of is probably, can she just email it to the school?
Absolutely. So if you had a doctor's note, and I get what you're saying, so if your child has a doctor's appointment, uh, of course, we would ask as much as possible, try to kinda schedule them around, you know, the class sessions or maybe try to time it, but if, in the event that you can't, uh, we will make sure that we address that, and I will have a way for you all to get that information. But what we'll probably do is just have an email that you can use so that you can email those notes to us so that we can add that to your child's file. But that's a great question, uh, Ms. Washington, and great question, uh, Ms. Hall.
Ms. Williams um says, "How will pre-K students be handled? Do parents with new pre-K students have to make a, a choice?"
Pre-K students do have to make a choice. As of right now, the pre-K department is going to handle, uh, as you all know, the pre-K department, of course, is housed in the building, but they are, in a sense, a separate entity. So the pre-K department, because of funding, the pre-K, pre-K department is going to make uh decisions around what it will look like in the classroom because they have guidelines that they have to follow. They haven't communicated those guidelines to us. The only information that we know is, uh, the pre-K students for the virtual option would only have to engage, I believe, is three-point-five hours because they understand that they're young and they can't sit in front of um the computer for that long period of time like they're older, uh, like the older students. So, uh, to answer your question, we haven't gotten much guidance around what it will look like uh from a virtual standpoint. Of course, from an in-school standpoint, uh, I'm sure that they're going to communicate uh guidance around the distance and peace and then around what lunch would be. But as of right now, we haven't gotten any communication specific other than what it looks like in a virtual setting. And to your, uh, to your question, you do have to select an option.
All right. So we have another, um, sounds, sounds like a statement, so I'll just read. It says, "I work from four-thirty A.M. until one P.M. and my children are third and fourth grade, and I'm having a problem on deciding whether we do virtual or in-school because my husband works out of town. I don't have any other help with them on ensuring they log in every day. What should I choose?"
Well, Ms. Latasha, that is a, I think that is a, a crossroad that uh many parents uh and staff are actually facing. Um, what I would do is, um, I would think about everything that I've shared, and I would ask you to really consider what you think is gonna be in the best interest of your children and what your family can manage. Uh, so if uh you think that the in-school option is more manageable because at least you know for that period of time where they are and, and, and what the expectations are, uh, I would say choose that. But if you feel like, uh, the virtual option is what you need to do, I would just ask that you make that informed decision uh on what would, what you think will work best. Uh, and also, uh, Ms. Latasha, I don't have the last name, uh, if you would, um, put your information, I'll connect with you later so we can talk offline and maybe kinda bounce some ideas off of each other around what you think would be the best for your baby. Uh, 'cause I would have a couple of questions. Uh, so if we could, let's connect offline and we can have a, a deeper conversation.
Okay. Ms. Washington, uh, wants to know, "When will the devices for virtual students become available?"
So Ms. Washington, uh, they are prioritizing uh who gets the devices. So they're prioritizing, quite naturally, parents that are selecting virtual. Uh, and their, their, the, the timeline is, all of the devices should be in uh by July. And the plan is to have all of the devices specifically to the students that are uh using a virtual option to have their devices by uh August thirty-first. But that's a, unfortunately, that's a timeline. But they are going to prioritize parents that choose virtual. So if you choose virtual, you're gonna be the first group of parents and students to receive those devices. So, um, the game plan again is to have all the devices to you all by August the thirty-first.
All right. The Grair family would like to know, "Will after-school tutoring sessions be available this school year?"
Now, after-school would be something that we would have to really look at because from the standpoint of trying to cut back on the amount of time that teachers and students are in the building outside of the ones that are taking advantage of before and after-care, I would say that is a decision that would kinda have to be made later on down the line. But because, again, Ms. Grair, this is our new normal. Of course, we know our babies will require uh after-school tutoring. Uh, but I also know that one of the things the district is trying to do regarding uh loss of learning is on our different breaks as well as possibly having options for students to attend Saturday school and/or, again, during different breaks, they're gonna have options for uh students to take advantage of learning, maybe like on fall break, for example. But as of right now, Ms. Grair, we don't have a hard, uh, decision on, on that just yet. But again, once we, once we get it, we'll make sure that we communicate that. And again, we know that that's what our parents are accustomed to, us doing uh after, uh, doing tutoring. So once we get more information and we're able to make an informed decision, Ms. Grair, we'll make sure that we communicate that to, to you as well as our other parents.
All right. As of right now, Mr. Woodson, those are all of the questions and/or comments that are in the chat box. Um, wait a minute, I think one just came. Ms. White, "Are there more than two people in my home?" Wait a minute, I don't know if she's asking or telling us that have a, uh, I guess, a weak immune system? Oh, she's saying there are more. There are more. I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, Ms. White, uh, that was, that was kinda the caution that I was mentioning. Uh, you know, if you choose in-school, you know, again, even under the best of circumstances, uh, your child is going to be around other children. Uh, and if we, if you already know that you have individuals in your home who have a compromised immune system, uh, the option for you may be virtual. Uh, but again, that would kinda be your decision. Uh, and, and, and it, and I would also say it depends on, you know, maybe, uh, what grade the kid is in, because one of the things that's gonna determine uh class size is the number of parents that enroll in the in-school option. You know, once we get that data, uh, we'll really know. And one of the challenges that I would like to, uh, that I would like to issue to all the parents on the phone is, "Parents, please go in and make your selection." I know the district has communicated that if you don't select, um, an option, it automatically defaults to in-school. The only challenge with that, parents, is, and I give an example right now, this is West Haven's hard data. We have eight-hundred-and-forty students. Uh, forty of those students are in pre-K, so we have about eight-hundred kids. Of our eight-hundred students that are enrolled at West Haven, only two-hundred-and-thirty-eight parents have made an option, they made a choice, which means over five-hundred parents have not made an option. And so it's really difficult for us to begin planning when we don't have the raw data. So if you have not gone in, although it's still gonna default you, go ahead and make your selection so that we'll have that raw data because I'm actually able to access our data real-time. So every time a parent goes in, I'm able to see who the parent is, who the child is, and what their options are. So please, 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 parents, before July the twenty-fourth, go in and select whether you wanna do in-school uh or virtual.
All right, Mr. Woodson, I think Ms. Williams was trying to say that you did a good job last year. Keep it up. Uh, and then also, uh, Ms. Washington wants to know, "What platform will the students use for virtual learning and how will the logins be issued out?" But before you answer that, I just wanna reiterate, I know you spoke about, we would do, um, the, uh, temper, take the temperatures of the students once they arrive to school, but we do wanna encourage parents to take it before they leave the house. So I don't know if you mentioned it, but also, Ms. Washington wanted me to, uh, add that as well.
Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, first, Ms. Williams, thank you. Uh, we are a team and we're gonna, again, we're gonna do what's in the best interest of our babies. Um, as far as the virtual platform, Ms. Williams, uh, the district is-
Ms. Washington.
Ms. Washington, I'm sorry. Ms. Washington, the district is going to use what's called Florida Virtual School. And as, as a matter of fact, I'm actually going to the training tomorrow. So it's a platform called Florida Virtual School uh that they will use for the virtual setting, but they will be receiving the instruction from a West Haven uh teacher. And Doc, thank you for that. Parents, again, uh, to Dr. C's point, we're going to take, take your baby's temperature when they get here. If you know that your baby is running a temperature, uh, that's one of the things I would go ahead and invest in. Go ahead and invest in a thermometer, uh, uh, so you can take your baby's temperature prior to them coming to school. Because if you're able to take their temperature prior to them coming to school and they have a temperature and it's just the temperature, that kinda protects your child from having to go into the isolation room when they could've been just, you know, at home with you. So again, take their temperatures before they, uh, leave school so that you're already kinda informed around what their temperature is. Because again, when they get here, if we, uh, scan them and they have a temperature of one-hundred-point-four, we will have to put them in an isolation room and then call you, uh, and have you come and pick, uh, your child up.
How, um, I think Ms. Black, "How will the IEP program work? Are they going to be online from eight-fifteen to three-fifteen?" Now, I think you mentioned this about the sped, it's a phone number for them to maybe call.
Yeah, Ms. Black, that, um, that is a, a great question. Again, any, uh, any child that has an IEP, that child is going to receive their services, even in the virtual platform. Uh, here at West Haven, I would like to commend my sped department because, uh, they still were providing services when we got out in March. They continued to check in and provide those services for their students from March until the last day. So we will be, we will, we would do that again. But would, it would be, uh, even more seamless this time because we weren't prepared for that. So if your child has an IEP, um, we're gonna make sure that we stick to what the IEP says. Yes, the time would be from eight-fifteen to three-fifteen, but again, uh, even in that timeframe, that child would be able to get their services, be able to take a lunch, uh, be able to engage with, uh, support as well. So the child will have, your child will have an opportunity for some breaks. It won't be the straight seven or eight hours sitting in front of the laptop. There will be breaks, uh, that are included in the schedule.
Ms. Hall says, "West Haven has the best capitalized sped program." So thank you.
Ms. Hall, you, you are, you are, you are absolutely right. We do, we do. They, they are- We do, we do. They, they are amazing. And for those who have had kids in SPED for a while, you know, they built some really great, genuine, authentic relationships with not only their students, but they've built great relationships with you all. So we wanna thank you all for partnering with us.
Ms. Black says she agrees, and thank you. Thank you, Ms. Black. So as of right now, Mr. Wilson, I don't see any more questions and/or concerns. Ms. Williams says she agrees as well. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Yes, they have a great IEP program as well, Mr. Gardner.
Admin team, can you all capture some pictures? I'm really excited about all the parents that we have joining us today. So if you all could, we look like we have like four pa, three pages of participants. So we wanna thank you all for tuning in.
Great job, parents, yes.
Great job, parents, great job, parents. And again, parents, if you got, if you have cousins and friends and you know they normally don't respond, let them know. Go in and make, go in and make their choice. Please go in and make the choice so we'll have our data. Like I said, right now, we only have 200 and, I think it's 38. I may transpose. Matter of fact, I did transpose the number. It's 283. So we have 283 of our 800 students that have choices that have been selected. So parents, please, I am asking you to recruit five more West Haven parents and give them a call and say, "Have you made your selection?" And when they say, "I don't know what to do," then Mr. Wilson did a video, it's on YouTube. I'm getting ready to send you the link. Watch the video, it'll walk you right through.
All righty.
All right. It doesn't look like we have any additional questions. Again, parents, we cannot thank you enough to my staff that joined. I have the best staff. So, parents, you are surrounded by your West Haven baby's teachers. So thank you, staff, for jumping on. Again, parents, share this information with any of your friends or neighbors who have students that attend West Haven. We're going to download this video and upload it to YouTube and be on the lookout. I won't, I won't send you a robo-text tonight. I know, I know you get a lot of them. I'm just trying to make sure you all informed, but I won't send it tonight. But tomorrow, be on the lookout for a text from me, and it will have the YouTube link. So you can go back and watch this whole video or fast-forward through the parts that you need. But again, we want to thank you all for tuning in today. We miss you all and we miss our babies. We cannot wait to see their faces, be it in-school or virtual.
The Grayer family says, "Excellent meeting." Ms. Smith said, "Thank you for this meeting." Ms. Hall said, "Yes, you do, and thank you all for what you do. Awesome job, Mr. Wilson and staff." And I think that Ms. Parsons says, "I need to go to the eye doc. I need some new glasses." I think this is, "Thank you."
Ma'am, I need you to be able to see if you're gonna be reading the chat box.
I know it, but they won't let me get an appointment.
Better hurry up and get your appointment for this work kick in. All right, parents, well, that is all, that is all I have. Oh, hey!
Hey, Morgan and Johnny! Hey!
Yeah, parents, we love you all, but if your babies are close by, can we see them?
I know, right?
We love y'all, but we would love to see our kids.
Hi, Mr. Wilson.
Hey! How you all doing? Wait a minute, what screen are y'all on? Wait a minute.
The last one, look like.
Yeah, on the third one.
Once they talk, they go in the middle. And Lacy's on there too. Hey!
Hi, Lacy.
Hello, I'm out.
They're darn Lacy.
Hey.
Hey.
Hey, Leah.
Hey, everybody.
That's nice.
Yeah, look at my leg, I see y'all. Hey! You all, your teachers are getting here too.
Hey, Mr. Wilson.
Hey, ma'am. I saw you from Mexico, where you go?
I'm at Bledsoe.
I'm at Wilson.
I'm at Bledsoe.
Right here.
I like it.
He's so big. I can't see you. He's getting so big.